I don't have a report tonight. We do have minutes to approve. Did you guys get a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Any feedback, changes? Nope. Then we'll consider the minutes approved. We had minutes for October 1st regular session, October 7th workshop, and October 15th regular session.
Just to note that I can't vote on the workshop, so.
Right. There are warrants on the table. We don't have any line item transfers, I believe.
We do have a line item transfer.
We can do that when you come back up here, that's fine.
Okay.
If you don't mind, sure.
Thank you.
Okay, and we'll move right into the superintendent's report. Ms. Combs?
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome. This is one of our most delightful meetings of the year because it's the meeting that I always have the opportunity to introduce an outstanding student to you. Although, most of these students, when we make this announcement, are well-known to the public because they are such amazing young people. And I'm pleased to introduce you to the superintendent's award recipient for 2004, and that's Brooke Hansel. Brooke, will you come up here and join me? I'm gonna make Brooke stand here while I read all about her and tell you all the amazing things that she's accomplished while she's been in school, and what a terrific leader she has been. I can tell you that this is a real delight. I've watched Brooke grow through the years here at Lunenburg High School, as well as before that, and she's just a truly remarkable young woman. And so I'm gonna tell you a little bit about some of the things that she's already accomplished. She's a senior at Lunenburg High School and the daughter of Mark and Kelly Hansel, and I know that her parents are here with us tonight. It's good to see you and thank you, as well as some grandparents as well, so. And Brooke undertook a rigorous course of study and is among the top achievers in her class. And in addition to distinguishing herself as a student, she's also been recognized for her remarkable service and leadership. She was recently awarded the Daughters of American Revolution Good Citizenship Award. And additionally, in 2013, Brooke was appointed to the Best Buddies International Young Leaders Council. This is a group of only 20 students from around the nation and internationally who provide the student perspective to the Best Buddies International Board and work on student initiatives. This past July, in Bloomington, Indiana, Brooke led workshops for attendees at that leadership conference. She also expertly manages challenging class schedule and other school activities, including, and the list is long, National Honor Society, Student Council, Best Buddies, and CHORUS. She currently is the president of the Lunenburg High School Student Council, as well as president of the Lunenburg High School Chapter of Best Buddies. She's a member of the LHS CHORUS, and she's received both the Outstanding Musician and Leader by Example awards. She's a three-season athlete. She's been the captain of the girls' soccer team for two years and was named MVP as a junior. She was selected as a League All-Star for five consecutive years in both indoor track, as well as outdoor track and field. She served as a Mass Star Delicate, an MIAA Student Ambassador, and she currently serves with 15 other Massachusetts high school athletes on the MIAA Student Advisory Committee. In addition to school activities, she does more. She's been the LH representative to the Lunenburg Community Council. She's also volunteered at the Lunenburg Family Gift Mart, has been a coach, and helped with the Unified Track and Field Championship Meet, as well as serving as a camp counselor for the Lunenburg Track and Field. Youth basketball referee, and neighborhood volunteerism as well. She personifies our mission for being a lifelong learner, a responsible community member. She's constantly growing, achieving, and giving. She inspires us all with her joy of learning, her enthusiasm for serving others and the community. It's an honor to recognize her this year. Congratulations.
So Brooke, maybe you can introduce your family that's here with you, if you don't mind, and then if you have anything you'd like to say, you're welcome to.
Well, my mom and dad are here with me tonight, and Grammy also. And I'd like to thank Mrs. Combs for this award. It means a lot to me, and I feel really honored to be receiving it, so thank you so much. And I just feel really lucky to be part of this Lunenburg community, and it's really shaped me into the person that I am. And I'm so thankful to be from Lunenburg, and I've loved growing up here and going to school here, so, thank you.
Do you want to do that transfer now?
No, we'll do it after you do your.
Okay. Well, that being said, I'm going to invite Brooke back up to the microphone to introduce the other Best Buddies that are here. We're very excited to have the students with us here tonight, and they're going to share with the community and the committee what Best Buddies chapter here at Lunenburg High School has been up to. So Brooke, I'll turn it back over to you.
Should we face this way? Yeah, okay. Okay. Is this on?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, so we are the Lunenburg High School Best Buddy Officer Corps, and here with me, I'm the president of Best Buddies, and these are all the other awesome, awesome officers that make up the Best Buddies team. So, we're really excited to be here. Thank you for inviting us here tonight. We've really been looking forward to it. So, before we introduce everybody, we just thought we'd give a brief overview of what Best Buddies is. So Best Buddies is actually a whole international organization, which a lot of people don't know about, and I didn't know about when I first joined Best Buddies. But Best Buddies is in many states in the United States and in countries all over the world. And its three main initiatives are to create friendships between students or people with and without disabilities, and leadership development, and job opportunities for people with disabilities. So, before we go any further, I'd like to introduce Ellen Harvey, who is going to give her very own introduction speech.
Hi, everyone. Hi, my name is Ellen Harvey. Thank you for inviting us here tonight. Tonight, we hope that you can learn and understand more about Best Buddies. I hope, while I spent two years at Best Buddies, I've been making friends at Best Buddies, enjoying my brother Cameron. He's at home with my dad. And my favorite activities from Best Buddies are family night, karaoke night, we have a night in bowling.
Thank you. Okay, next slide, please.
Next slide.
Okay, so now we will have everyone introduce themselves.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sarah Weston. I am the buddy director of Best Buddies.
Perfect. Okay. You can pass it on to Rachel.
Hi, I'm Rachel. I'm one of the vice presidents for our Best Buddies chapter. Sam Day is the other one. She's a little sick, so she couldn't make it tonight.
I'm Judith. I'm the treasurer for Best Buddies.
Me and Ellen are the treasurers of Best Buddies, and this is, actually, I'm sorry, secretaries of Best Buddies.
Okay, so this is just a little video that gives a little bit of an overview of what Best Buddies is.
Everybody needs somebody.
A friend. Somebody who knows.
Can make you laugh.
How do you feel about football?
Moving.
City.
Life. Somebody who always has your back.
A real friend.
Best buddy.
But sometimes it can be hard for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities.
Make friends.
That's why we started Best Buddies.
A network of more than 70,000 friends.
Across America.
Underneath the world.
Best Buddies matches people like me.
Like me.
Like me.
With people like me.
Like me.
Like you.
To create one-on-one friendships that foster understanding.
Break down barriers.
And help us see how.
Beautiful.
Smart.
And amazing.
We all are.
And we can use your help.
Visit bestbuddies.org and see how you can get involved. Because everybody needs a best buddy.
Including me.
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 You.
So, in our Best Buddies chapter, there's two types of buddies. There are people that are matched in a one-on-one friendship, and then, this is really great, we have so many students that we don't have enough to match in a one-on-one friendship. So, each month we do a group activity, and that really gets everybody involved, even if they're not necessarily matched in that one-on-one friendship.
Last year, we did pumpkin painting at Brooke's house, and we decorated pumpkins, and we made colorful designs on them. Mine was Pikachu. And we got all the pumpkins stolen there by Dick's Market Gardens. After we painted the pumpkins, we put them on display in school so that everyone can enjoy them.
Every year, bowling is a very popular activity, so that's always a fun one that we do.
Last year, we did cookie decorating, and we made cookies. And some of the cookies were made by Dust Kitchen where my mom goes and gets cakes. And so, we made the cookies with sprinkles, and we made some with our friends, like Taylor Howe, Edmondard, Sarah Weston, and myself. So...
The Special Olympics is just a really great time for the whole Lunenburg Best Buddies chapter. We all, it's just a really good time for everybody to cheer everybody on. Even though I wasn't part of the Lunenburg Best Buddies last year, the high school, I still went with the Achieve program from the Turkey Hill Middle School. So, it's really just a great environment, and the whole chapter goes and cheers everybody on. It's just a lot of fun.
Every year, oh, that's okay. So, every year before the Special Olympics, we have a Special Olympic Rally, where the entire school gets together in the gym, and there's a bunch of posters supporting all the athletes and their buddies. And they just cheer everyone on and introduce everyone and the events they're gonna be doing, and it's a great time to see everyone supporting all our athletes.
So those are all the activities that we do, or some of the activities that we've done outside of school. But every week during Tuesday homerooms, we come together and meet for that 20-minute period, and we just do different activities. So this is one that we did last spring, which was, we made these butterflies as decorations for our school to try to spruce up the school for the spring. So, just like fun things like that, we do every week during homeroom. So last year, we tried to bring some awareness campaigns to our school, and basically, the point of the awareness campaigns is just to bring awareness to different disabilities. And it just promotes understanding and acceptance within our school. And we thought that it really brought our school community together when we did these activities together.
So one that's always a big one is Autism Awareness Day. This was great because it got everybody involved in the school. It wasn't just people in Best Buddies, it was all the students. A lot of people wore blue, and we had puzzle pieces in the cafeteria, which everybody could sign and everybody could see.
Another one of the campaigns that we participated in last year was Spread the Word to End the Word, which is actually a national campaign to end the derogatory use of the R-word, which is retard. So, we did, we actually made a whole video together as a chapter to spread the word to end the word. So, on the next slide is the video that we made.
Everyone is special in no way. Everyone is different in no way. So, we're all like in no way.
Would, um, since you were sitting near the back.
Joining this place and keep this place true.
End the word, end the word.
Did you prove it's a mess? Write the word, end the word. Estudiante de tu lugar, comunica la palabra para terminar la palabra.
End the word, end the word.
We're all hungry cats, we're all towards the core.
End the word, end the word.
But the word.
So that was the video that we showed at the end of our Special Olympics rally. And it's just like a really awesome way to get our whole school involved with our mission that we were trying to spread throughout the school. And Sarah actually made a speech at the rally. So, do you want to talk about that, Sarah? If you want to, it's up to you. Okay, that's okay. We'll skip to the next part. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll just say this.
Sure.
Okay. During Spread the Word to End the Word, I made a speech in front of the whole school about Spread the Word to End the Word, to help people realize that saying mean words hurts others and is not a good idea.
Perfect. If you just pause it.
Oh, sorry. I apologize.
There you go, okay. And then, so, two slides, right? Okay. There you go, Sarah.
So this year, we wanted to do a lot of service projects around the community and everything, and it's really aimed to give back to the people that have helped us create this program to where it is today. So throughout these service projects, we want to spread awareness about Best Buddies and get a lot of sponsors as well.
Alright, so during one of our Tuesday homeroom activities, we all decorated these signs, and we were gonna put them on recycling bins. So, the point of this was to put the recycling bins in different areas around town, and in hopes that people would put the recycling into the bins, and then we could turn that in for small bits of money. And it would be helping the community as one of the service projects, and also helping the club.
So we're still looking for some places to put the bins. We know that a Boy Scout is already doing it at the track, which is awesome, but we're looking for some other places that might need recycling. So, if anyone has any businesses or any place that they might want our recycling bins, let us know. We'd love to hear. Okay. Alright, and Sarah has a speech to give to us all for the last bit.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sarah Weston. I am the buddy director at Lunenburg High School. As the buddy director, I attend officer meetings and help plan events for our chapter. I love Best Buddies because we get to spend time with friends and do really fun activities together. This year, our Best Buddies chapter wants to do more charity work to give back to the community as a thank you for all the generous things they do for us. I love spending time with friends and think that, and think that everyone should get a chance to have great friends too. That is why I plan events for Best Buddies, and that is why I am the buddy director, of course. So, please, support Best Buddies, and together, we can make a difference in people's lives. Like Martin Luther King, I have a dream. My dream is that we can create a world of inclusion and acceptance for everyone. Thank you.
So we also put our Lunenburg Best Buddies email address up there. If anybody has any suggestions for our chapter, anything that we can get involved with, we would love to become more involved in the community in any way that we can. So, we'd love to get emails from everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Maybe some questions?
Okay. How many kids are participating in Best Buddies?
So this year, it was awesome. We actually had 60 students come and join Best Buddies. So, last year, I think we had 40, so that was a big growth.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you. It's good to see you all here.
Thank you.
Not a question, but a comment. It was, first of all, it was a wonderful presentation. You all did a terrific job. And the, the video was very, very well done, very impressive, very moving. And I hope that gets, you know, distributed widely, because it's a really wonderful piece of work.
Thank you.
I just want to tell you all again how proud we are of you, and what you do, and what all our students do, to make our community so inclusive. And you are always a representation of the best of all of us, and I thank you for doing that. One of your peers is here tonight to show another project that a student, as an Eagle Scout, has done. And so I think you'd like to stay for his presentation, and then we'll give everybody a chance to head home and do their homework. Okay? Thank you again to the Best Buddies chapter.
Is it possible for us to get a link to that video up on our site?
I, I'm sure that we can figure out how to do that.
I think that would be wonderful.
Great. I, I wanted to introduce Jacob Vega, and Jacob has been working on an Eagle project, and it's a project that benefits the community and also our schools, because it sits on our school site, and it's easily accessible. And I'm gonna pull up some pictures here in just a minute, Jacob, but maybe, and Jacob's a senior at Lunenburg High School, and he also happens to be one of the drum majors of the Lunenburg High School Marching Band, so another one of our students that is just very involved in his community and in his school, and gives back so much. So, Jacob, just one second, and we'll have these up there for you, okay? Okay. The sizing on these were compressed when they were sent to me, but maybe you can describe? This shows your project there in front of Turkey Hill Middle School.
Well, first of all, I want to thank Mrs. Combs, Mrs. Lasert, and Mr. Londa for spending so much time face-to-face and over email to make this happen, because there's a lot of communication and a lot of paperwork and a lot of stuff in relation to this, and I wouldn't have been able to do it without them and their, just all of their work. So, what this is, is a volleyball net, a volleyball court for the Turkey Hill Middle School. The idea came about when the building went from a six to eight to a four to seven building. And when I was thinking about projects, one of the things I thought about was that there's people going out for recess every day at Turkey Hill, and they didn't really have anything to do at Turkey Hill when they were at a recess, other than kind of walk around the field, maybe play some football. But this really added something to make recess happen. And also, volleyball's a huge component to the phys ed program at Turkey Hill. As, being there, volleyball was one of the things I always liked to do, because it was never taken too seriously. It was always something where you could go and just have fun. And there wasn't a whole lot of rules. It was just, you know, keep the ball up. So, that's what I liked about it. So, the great thing about it is it's, it's just kind of there, and it's great to pick up, and it doesn't take a lot of skill to do, and everybody can enjoy it. So, as you see there, there's a lot of fourth and fifth graders who are having a ball outside, and they really do. They are amazing kids, and they just are burning off steam, as my parents like to say. So, they were just having a great time, and that put a huge smile on my face. So, one of the things that makes this project even larger than the middle school is that the net stays out three seasons, maybe even four seasons, depending on how things go. But also, there's, there's lines painted on the field, but also what comes with it is these bins that have lines that outline the boundaries of volleyball for people who are a little more serious about how they want to play it. And one of those kits is soon to be available at the library, so people could go and rent out the kit for the day and, you know, set up the boundary lines. There's instructions in there, and you could play a real game of volleyball out there if you really wanted to. The kit is in the process of being cataloged. It's kind of a new thing for the library to be renting out volleyball equipment. But they, Mrs. Moore, the director there, is amazing, and she, when I spoke to her, she's like, "Never really done something like this, but it sounds like a good idea, so we're gonna work on it." And she's looking at how it's gonna be cataloged, and thinking a lot about how to, you know, preserve the kit itself for, you know, lots of people to use it without it being, when other being hurt or treated properly. And that's definitely her, her department, not mine. But she has been great, and it's just, I can't, I can't speak to how much fun it is, but I could, I had fun building it, definitely. But you look, I wish you could see the faces, the smiling faces of those kids. They're having such a great time. And that's what this really came down to. I mean, there's a lot of Eagle projects that come out, and we do a lot of stuff. Sometimes it's on hiking trails, or it's in parks, or it's a lot of, that's what a lot of Eagle projects end up working toward. And that's really great for people who go to parks, and for people who like to sit on benches. And, don't get me wrong, any Eagle project is amazing, but I didn't imagine how happy people would be, and I think that's just perfect, so.
Great. Excellent, Jacob. Thank you so much for, it was such a clever project, you know. Eagle Scout projects are always very impressive, but this particular one, I know Jacob really thought about it a lot. We had lots of meetings trying to really actualize it, and he's just done a superb job with it, and it's already bringing a lot of youth and joy to the community. Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you. Anybody, anybody who can tire out a bunch of middle schoolers deserves like double the award. As a father of a middle schooler, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
As a father of a middle schooler, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You, too.
Duncan told me about it. So, as promised, we're going to let these young individuals, students, go ahead and excuse themselves. I thank them again for coming.
Thank you.
And their parents and grandparents and supporters. Thanks to all the parents, too, for all the support they've provided and for sharing these great kids with us.
Thank you.
I was trying to turn it off. There it goes, finally. I seem to be technology challenged today. I have a little bit more to superintendent's report, if I could. Dr. Berthium, I wanted to make you aware that yes, yesterday, yes, it was Tuesday, David Warner, who's the landscape architect on the project through Tape Association and Warner Larson Landscaping Architectural Design, presented to our horticulture class at Lunenburg High School. Mrs. Garen had had the students out looking at the development of the front field, and we had talked to the both CEM at risk as well as other individuals working on the project, and they've really made themselves available to the school community in terms of these professionals wanting to share their expertise, answer questions of the students, and we're going to be doing more and more of those. I know that Turkey Hill Middle School did some things around erosion control and erosion patterns during that heavy rainstorm. They were able to see some examples of that and how those are mitigated and prevented. And so, those are the kinds of opportunities that as the project moves forward, we continue to take advantage of. And I just wanted to thank David for coming out and doing that presentation. It was very informative and engaging. In addition to talking about the nuts and bolts of this project and the landscape around this project and his vision around that and how it comes together and the reasons certain things end up like they do. He also shared a little, his story in terms of how he got from a high school student who he shared at that time was probably not the most engaged student in the world and ended up finding this passion. And so, it was a wonderful opportunity for the students to hear about his pathway to this profession that he loves and does so well. So, I wanted to acknowledge that and thank David at this meeting for that. I also wanted to remind everyone that the report cards have been posted at each one of the school websites, and we encourage parents to read the letters that accompany those as well as see the report cards at their, posted at the ESE website. And in addition to the student performance information, they provide information about the licensures in the buildings and other important information for parents. We also, I want to remind everyone that we have a calendar advisory. I'm sure that'll be discussed a little bit later. And we have a survey that's posted, and there was a link. It's posted on our main page, and we encourage parents to take that. And a little bit more about that later on. Report cards will be coming home here shortly, and I also wanted to call to everyone's attention that the PTO is still seeking members, and we are sending a membership form home in addition to the report cards, and just want to encourage everyone to be part of this wonderful organization that does so much in support of our schools. And I wanted to also add, this afternoon, I wanted to, at this committee, given that we're televised, I also wanted to share with you some information that Mrs. Blaisdell sent out today at Lunenburg Primary School. She sent this as a voice message, and I'm going to read that message to you. "This is to inform you that I implemented a shelter in place at the school this afternoon. During recess, a student reported seeing a man with a gun in the woods by the access road. As per our emergency procedures, a shelter in place was implemented at 11:15 PM. The police were immediately notified and checked the area and the surrounding neighborhood. No evidence of a trespasser was discovered." A shelter in place means that outdoor activities are discontinued at the school and students remain in the classroom engaged in schoolwork. The students resumed their regular schedules at 1:55 PM today. Over the next several days, the police department will increase their presence in the area. Please contact the administration at the primary school if you have any questions or if your child exists any anxiety as a result of this event, that we may assist you. Our counseling staff will be available for students tomorrow morning and every morning. Our students' safety and their emotional well-being is always our first priority. So, I just want to thank the administration and staff, faculty and staff of the high school for following our protocols and putting in place, the primary school, putting those things in place. As the community, I believe, is aware in this committee, we just want to remind everyone that we do pay attention to this environment, and we feel that we really put students' safety first and want to take appropriate action. I did understand from Mrs. Blaisdell, at the end of the day, that some of our staff went to a higher degree of alert in the school. You know, student safety is number one, and once again, I know our administration is there, and so if parents have any questions or concerns, please just give them a call, and they will address it. But I did want to make sure that the committee received this information and the public and that we're here to respond to any questions you might have. Can I just clarify? The shelter in place was at 1:15, not 11:15. Oh, yes, 1:15. 1:15, yes. The shelter in place was called at 1:15.
There was, so we got, I got the robocall at home, which was good. Do those robocalls end up leaving a voicemail? Because my wife saw that I got called, didn't know what the issue was, but there was no, there was no voicemail, so slight panic from, from...
They definitely leave a voicemail on our machine at home.
Yeah, so it's mixed then, is what happened, right?
We, the system, when we checked it, 89% of the calls had been received.
Okay. No, that's good to know. It was one of those, I just got a question about it. And then, are there any other further communications that are going to be done besides here and the phone call? Will there be an email sent out? Has anything gone out to all the parents of the primary school yet?
This went to all the parents in the primary school. The phone call did, yes.
Will there be an email sent out to those parents who have an email in the system?
Because we saw the number that have received the phone call, we had not planned to do that at this point in time. Yep.
But again, if anyone has any questions, they shouldn't hesitate to call the principals or Ms. Combs.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
I also just wanted to thank Chief Marino and his officers for, you know, really responding so quickly and helping us, assisting us with the search. I was down there when they came into the building to report their findings, and I know that they did a thorough check of the woods around there, as well as talking to those in the neighborhood by the access road, and so we appreciated their assistance in this.
Okay. Thank you. We have no student report tonight, so school building report, Mike?
Sure. The, we attended a construction meeting 12 today, which means that we're now three months into the project, since we're meeting weekly. Again, we're on schedule for the steel to be delivered to the site by the 8th of December, at which time the steel erection will begin. Steel erection is going to go through the December, January, February completion, looking like early March. Sewer and storm on the property will be substantially completed by the end of this month. They've already completed the prepping and first layer paving for the west parking lot, and they'll be continuing to lay the, that first layer of asphalt to complete all the parking and access roads on the current The, the foundation and footing for Section A is virtually complete. They're 80% now on Section B for foundation wall, frost walls, interior frost walls, and they're continuing on schedule with that, and they're beginning footings and foundation in Section D. And that is, again, all expected to be completed by the second week of January, so that as the steel gets erected, they'll have the entire, you know, foundation completed. We're on schedule to, we did have the bids open. The bids are being reviewed. They seem to be in line with the project budget, so we seem to be in good shape there for a guaranteed maximum price approval by the first or second week of December. The next meeting of the school building committee will be Wednesday, next Wednesday, the 12th, Room 13, TCP. We do have a Butters meeting scheduled for tomorrow. That's the 6th, the TCP cafeteria at 6:30.
6:30.
Right. And again, there hasn't, there was some, in terms of Butters, there was one concern raised by a Butter. It's been addressed, seems to have been addressed. So, again, everything seems to be on schedule, on budget. This group had requested that the building committee take a look at an alternative parking for TCP. We've seen a preliminary design on that, which will be presented to the building committee next week, at which time the architect will also be able to give us some idea of what the additional service cost would be and a ballpark on the potential cost. The issue, of course, isn't the paving itself. It's the additional drainage work that would need to be done. And, and again, I think that, you know, the architect has always felt all along that those 30 spaces were extra, that the design of the site itself didn't require those 30 spaces. But since we had them there, they were a good thing. We could repave them. You know, his position has always been that they're not necessary for our use, but are good things to have. So, we're going to continue this discussion and make a decision based, A, on the necessity and the cost.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
We did have some pictures, if you want to...
Oh, yes, please. Yeah, we have some wonderful pictures of the site ongoing. Let's see. That's that wonderful Powell loader that's working there.
Yes, they've started to backfill. This is actually the high school wing, and all the columns are in place, and they've backfilled around the frost walls, and they're just now going into that part of the building in order to get to that central area to work on those walls. This is shot down the high school wings area. You can see down in the distance there, now that I know how to zoom in with my trusty little arrows here. Thank you, Dr. Berthium. What you're seeing there in the distance there is basically part of the foundation wall that the greenhouse will eventually be platformed at. But this is, this is getting to a point, you can see that this work, the backfill around that won't happen for a while. That would be guarded. They can't actually finish that until we really move very, are ending up with Phase 1 and moving into Phase 2, which is the abatement and the taking down of the old high school at that point. Just another shot, a little closer up, that shows you that. You can see all the damp proofing that's been put on it. This is looking across at where that central area is, as well as the auditorium and gym areas, the central office area. That's moving right along. You can see the front part of the stage there. The furthest black that's there is actually the front part of what will be the stage in the auditorium is where that's located. Some more work. That's where the art rooms are going to be. You're, we're basically standing in the media center and looking at the art room, the position of the art rooms there. And those, that front part of the building, the main office and main entry area, and then coming around to the middle school and getting ready to put those around the service road. Oh, that's a good picture, wasn't it? That was one of my better ones. Somebody's feet. So, it's very exciting to be able to get out on the site on a weekly basis, and it's just quite remarkable progress, and we hope that we continue, it's, the weather's really cooperating with us. We are looking forward to that steel being delivered and starting to plan the topping off ceremony as well sometime in late February or early March. Mr. Londa and I and all the principals from across the district, Mrs. Blaisdell from the primary school, as well as Mr. Santi and Mr. Spadafino, met with our owner's project manager to start finalizing the details around the logistics of the move into this building and the reorganization of the district in terms of the other grade levels that are going to be moving, what needs to be done, so we're prepared for that. Substantial completion of this building is scheduled for the end of March of 2016. And the calendar committee, I'm meeting with the in-house calendar committee tomorrow, and as I said before, I know that the special advisory on the calendar will be reported out under reports later today, but we're really looking at how we develop a calendar for the next year as well as the following school year that provides us, the faculty and staff, just the time to do what needs to happen from June until August to make sure that, that move into the building and the reorganization goes very smoothly for everyone. So, we're ready for students on that, that first day as we open in the fall of 2016 in a reconfigured district with a new co-located middle school, high school.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to our new business, and we have our nursing budget, and Ms. Ford is here to talk to us.
She is. Welcome. I'll pull it up in just a second, I promise. But Mrs. Ford's also going to give us an update about some other things going on around the district, so. Look at that.
Is this your first one?
Yes.
It is.
It's way to sort of ease into it.
Yes, right.
They're all going to look like that. They're all going to look just like that.
No, I've already seen Mr. Londa's.
I know we do.
You think?
It's hilarious.
Can you see it?
I'll just talk.
And they, I think people have it on their...
You need to angle the microphone.
Angle the mic over.
They can't hear you on TV.
They can't hear you on TV.
Okay, so, I have a little bit about the budget and a little summary about the year. I didn't see all of you at the end of the year. So, the consumable supplies can be variable, so we added a 2.5% increase for those items, as well as a similar increase for our school physician who has not seen an increase for many years. Several high-priority items, such as EpiPens and AED supplies, continue to increase. But with the EpiPen for Schools program, I'm still able to meet the supply demands. Current costs for EpiPen twin packs can be between $5 and $5.50 for a twin pack, but this program, I can get them for free. So, each building is able to have two twin packs to cover all... So each building is able to have two twin packs to cover all the different doses depending on the size of the child. And the AED, pardon me, the AED supplies consist of replacement batteries, which are about 169 each, and replacement pads, which last for about eighteen months. And the batteries all got replaced this past, between like the end of the school year and through the summer. So, we're looking pretty good on that, but they are some of the higher priced things. So, that is the budget. We are continuing to receive the Department of Public Health mentored school grant, which provides our health offices with non-consumable items. This past year, we gained shredders, emergency go bags for each office, an AED trainer and field trip bags for the primary school. And we also used some of the funds for subnurseries, for instance, when I have to go to a nurse leaders meeting, and we used some of it to help finish our screenings, like as quick as possible. They are mandated, we have to do them, but we're trying to disrupt as little as possible of their time on learning. And we'll continue to use those funds from the grant to obtain additional items as long as the grant monies are available. So far, they are this year. For the, so that's it for that. A little summary for the 1314 school year, we had 10,585 office visits, over 6,000 medication visits, and completed just over 2,000 screenings for the students. Our population consists of almost 300 students with emotional behavioral conditions, it's about sixteen percent, 117 students with allergies, 93 students with asthma, and 15 students cardiovascular disorders, seven with diabetes, and 14 students with seizure disorders, as well as a multitude of other things that we are managing. Approximately 10% of our student population have healthcare plans. Of the 1,629 students, 122, sorry, 1,222 of them visited the health office at least once during this past school year. I would be remiss if I didn't thank my fellow nurses for their hard work managing very busy health offices. The return to class rate for this past year was varied 94 to 96 percent. So, that's excellent. Any questions?
Any questions?
I know, that's what I say when I leave.
That's a lot of office visits.
It's a lot of, yes, we're not...
I have to talk to my children.
Yes, we're not just sitting around.
All right. And I know the question's been asked, and it's not in this budget because, the budget that we're preparing for next year, because next year will be in our same configuration as this year. But when the middle school, high school is designed as a co-located building, there are offices in that design for two nurses, a middle school nurse and a high school nurse, as well as principals and assistant principals for each of those particular buildings as well, with the core spaces being shared. And so, I just wanted, right now, we have three nurses in the districts, we have three buildings. We're actually, with the enrollment beyond what the recommended staffing level is, and I really appreciate the way that all our staff have really worked over these years to have safe environments for our students and provide the services. And as we've said all along, we know that this new configuration in the new building are going to enhance the educational opportunities for every single student in our district. And certainly, our nursing staff is managing a lot of very significant health concerns and doing what school nurses do, which is keeping kids in classrooms and learning, because that's where kids learn. So, thank you for that work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, just to remind the public who may not remember how this works, these are recommended budgets that we're going to hear over the next several meetings from the individual people, but that doesn't mean that that's the budget, right? At the end of the process, Ms. Combs will put together a recommended budget, which will add everything up and try and balance the needs, we're hearing about the needs, against the available resources. And that's when it gets exciting. But, thank you. Okay, and next we have the maintenance budget. Mr. Londa, would you like to join us?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, I'll, going to touch on, I think, the high points of the maintenance budget and any other questions you have, should give those a stab. So, this maintenance budget was prepared with a couple of things in mind. First and foremost was the fairly sizable increases that we're going to see for both natural gas and electricity. And the second one was, you know, the impacts for the middle school, high school coming online. We will pick up some costs associated with that building once we complete, have substantial completion. And while those costs may not be typical of when we occupy it, they still will be costs. And, you know, some items within the building will still be operating even before we occupy, things like elevators, life safety systems, phone systems. All these things will still be running, but they will, and they will be drawing energy at some level. There will be some natural gas probably be used for heating. So, those things were figured in. They're not the major drivers, but they are, is a thing that had to be considered. So, for the, going down, picking up on the lines that made the largest changes, natural gas. So, we're expecting effective one December of this year to see a 15% increase in the cost of natural gas supply. So, the budget you see there has us operating the high school way through the end of the year. It has additional costs in there for heating, some level of heating at the middle school, high school for the remainder of months of the year. It's a small number, but it is in there just to try to make sure that we don't find ourselves a little hole for that. But as I said, most of the increase is associated with that increase in the cost of natural gas. The second one I wanted to bring up would be is the emergency expenditure where I'm recommending, we currently are carrying like $2,500 in the emergency expenditure line. You know, we never know if we're going to use it or not. However, 2,500, you know, doesn't go very far. So, from a risk standpoint, we can take risks there, but I would recommend we increase that to 5,000. And even that's a pretty small number, but would handle most of the typical type of emergencies we might see. The next line I wanted to highlight was the electricity line. This was the one that we're actually seeing the largest increase on at the, for supply costs, those are going to go up about 54%. So, the impact for that is that, and that's only one component of our electricity cost. We have distribution and we have supply, and, you know, it's roughly 50/50. But our cost per kilowatt hour in the aggregate will go from about 20 cents a kilowatt to about 25 cents a kilowatt. So, that's where you see a 22.6% increase for electricity. And once again, we are carrying costs associated with the high school, middle school, high school, because as I said, we'll have this school under our, under our control and we will be incurring some costs for operating that, even if we're not, you know, operating at its full capacity. Last one I wanted to highlight was water consumption, and that shows an increase of $3,600. And that's associated with the grass field. The grass field that is out in front of the current high school will go over to the school department's maintenance responsibility, probably sometime late in the spring, I would suspect. And then we will have some costs for water, watering that field through the summer months. And that's about $3,000, you know, 3,600 is what I put in there for a increase for the, for annual costs that might go up, and then also the 3,000 for the athletic field. So, the overall impact of this budget is a pretty substantial increase of about 80,000, taking, wrecking the recommended budget that I'm bringing forward of $716,067.
So, John, on the electricity and gas, at our last meeting, I think you had indicated that our allocation for this year was likely to be inadequate. So, are the 15 budgeted numbers the, what you expect to be inadequate numbers, or is that adjusted?
I think that we have, you know, we have a lot of time to be able to make adjustments. And so, I'm, I think we're going to be okay. You know, we'll look at what adjustments need to be made to be able to stay on budget.
Okay.
But we haven't moved those funds.
We haven't moved any funds yet. And, you know, like I said, we know that these rates are going to go into effect, and so we're going to see the impact this year. So, like I said, I think that we ought to come up with some adjustments to be able to make to stay on that budget, but we have time to do that, I think.
Right, so I guess my question is, is that the right baseline to start from for next year? Or have we underestimated the cost of electricity and gas next year and put ourselves...
You know, I used, to be able to calculate the electricity and natural gas costs, I looked at the number of therms and the number of kilowatt hours we used in the last year and then used the new rates applied against that and then figured a, I believe, a 3% increase for distribution costs go up. So, I think these are good numbers. You know, the real unknown would be is the middle school, high school, because we have no historical data. And obviously, we're not going to be operating it in the same capacity we might operate the high school.
So, your question is, are we low?
Yeah, I mean, really, the challenge is that our budget is so tight that if we underestimate the cost for heating, it's going to come out of something else next year, and that gets really painful late in the year, heating or electricity. So, I'd like to make sure that we have an adequate, that you're confident that these numbers are not going to increase. So, I'd rather you put a little bit of headroom in them to make sure that they're sufficient than to end up late in the year having to, you know, impact our educational program at the last minute to fund heat. That's never desirable. So, if you're confident, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I think for that part of the budget, that's fine. Last year, and I do recommend it again this year, that we look to try to get a second maintenance person on board, trying to run the district with one is, you know, we're probably in the best position to do it right now because we've, we've got 150,000 square feet of building that somehow we're going to get out of. But, you know, for the long haul, once you bring a new building on board and you're trying to maintain this building, having one maintenance person will be a problem.
Right, but those dollars aren't fungible. Dollars for heat and dollars for people are different kinds of money.
Yes.
Are there no, do we have no options on the electricity and gas? I mean...
Yeah, we do. And, but this is, this was our best option.
That's the best option we have?
So, and during August and September, we contracted with the FLAC collaborative, along with the FLAC collaborative with Tradition Energy to do, to bid out with the collaborative for electricity costs and natural gas costs. And that collaborative, of course, represents quite a few buildings across our section of the Commonwealth. So, we think we got decent pricing, but, you know, I think what you're seeing is the impact of, of natural gas capacity in Massachusetts.
And on the electricity side too, I mean...
Yeah, that, because of the, because what's going on is really is a transition from nuclear and oil-fired plants to natural gas plants, the natural gas supply is driving our electricity costs as well.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Londa? Okay. Thank you, John. Okay, we have an ice hockey trip.
We do. Mr. Short has requested once again this year for the ice hockey team to be able to take a trip to Waterville Valley, New Hampshire. You know that that particular sport is, we partner in terms of that sport with Air Shirley. And so, the cost is borne fully by the Booster Club supports this trips and makes the necessary payments that the students are able to, the athletic coach, athletes are able to attend. The chaperones are the four coaches, as well as Mr. Dupuy, who's just a phenomenal supporter of the ice hockey program here in the community. And they'll be staying again at the Snowy Owl Inn. And the itinerary is basically to leave on the fifth of December. And they travel up after school and then spend the sixth up there and return on the seventh. This is a pretty, this trip we've done annually with the ice hockey team for many, many years. I think it's been almost four or five years that they've been going to New Hampshire. They used to go to Lake Placid, New York, but this is the trip that they've been making most recently. And it's always a good team-building time for this team that comes together from the three communities and a productive way for them to start the season. So, I'd recommend approval of the trip again this year.
Any questions?
Did he present at the last meeting?
No, I don't remember him doing that. Did he?
Present this trip?
Yeah, I thought we went over this trip.
We will, the last meeting, we did revision to the European trip that Mrs. York had...
We haven't done this one yet.
No?
Nope.
Deja vu.
They do all run together.
I'm like, I have it right in my head, the whole cat.
So, I'll make the motion? Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And we should definitely thank the Booster Club for making this available at very minimal cost for the athletes. Okay, we have our FLAC quarterly report.
Yes, under the new regulations, the collaborative, the executive director puts together a report that gives everybody an update about the space and how the collaborative is governed. And then also, working with, shows the professional development opportunities that have taken place, and then gives a listing of the consultant and other related service use that's being done in each one of the collaborative communities. And so, that is what's been provided at this point in time. And I just want to call it to the, you have this in writing, it's available at our office. It's posted at the FLAC website as well. And so, we just wanted to call that to everyone's attention. No action is necessary on this.
Does anyone have any questions on that? Okay, great, thanks. And we have a donation from the Lunenburg Community Council.
We do. And we actually have another donation that I'd like to call to your attention after this one as well, if possible, Dr. Bertheum and the committee. But I'd like to acknowledge and recommend that we send a thank you to the Lunenburg Community Council, who provided $360 to support Nature's Classroom scholarships this year for that trip out of Turkey Hill Middle School. And this really is a great assistance for our students to make sure that opportunity is available for all the students that want to attend. So, I'd like to acknowledge that donation. And I'd also like to let you know that I've heard from the PTO, I met with the members of the executive board on Tuesday, was it?
Yep.
Yes. And they had shared with me that the, the PTO will be making a contribution to each one of the schools in the amount of $1,500. 1,000 of that is, is to go towards some kind of assembly or educational program onsite in the building, and then $500 is for the principal in conjunction with his faculty to determine some supplies or materials that may benefit the entire school. So, I wanted to acknowledge and thank the PTO for all their work in making those funds available to us.
That's great, thank you. All right, we're up to old business, and we had a couple of policies that we had our first reading on last time. We'll start with the service animals policy. Did we get any feedback?
We have not... We have not received any feed... Any additional feedback. I think just to remind everyone, this is a policy we've been working on for some time now, and we have received and responded to the public input as well as working with our legal counsel on it. But at this time, we have not received any feedback on any of those updates or new policies.
Okay. So is there a motion to waive the second reading?
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. And on Section 3000? Same thing?
Same thing.
Okay. Is there a motion to waive the second reading on the Section 3000?
The moves?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just a reminder that those are posted at our website, and it shows the deadline. If there's still time for the public to look at those and give us feedback. We moved to third reading at the end of this month at the next school committee meeting. So if you're interested, I encourage you to go there and look at those policies and give us your feedback.
Absolutely. Thank you. Is there any public comment? Any public comment from the board first?
If I could, Mr. Bertheum?
Sure.
I, as a member of the board directors for the Lunenburg Boys and Girls Club, just want to bring to everybody's attention the current straits that the club is experiencing. Their usage has gone up substantially this year, and it's created a shortfall for their budget. They've been budgeting for about 40 students, with 80 students being, you know, their usual enrollment. They have 100 students this year with an average daily attendance of 50, which would meant that they really, in order to operate, you know, the high-quality, safe program, they needed additional staff. So I wanted to just mention this. It's a unique service and support to the community, especially to our common concerns for our children in school. These are kids that, you know, can come from our school to there as a safe alternative. And so the club is working on many things to kind of right the ship. But, you know, one of the things that obviously could help is if people would get involved. And certainly, there's a website that they can go to if they wish to donate.
Excellent.
Mike, isn't there a fundraiser this week? At Barnes &amp; Noble?
There is a Barnes &amp; Noble fundraiser this week. There is. And there will be a... Kind of a letter going out, which would be, you know, their annual appeal letter. And, you know, they're also... Obviously, we've always attempted to have the club be very inexpensive in order to include everybody. And we had a meeting with parents last week to discuss the increasing of the club dues as part of it. It's not going to solve the problem, but, you know, it's certainly going to go...
Partway.
Partway. And the parents are really stepping up and looking for ways to help. But I appeal to the community at large that this is a unique service that costs nothing and is completely dependent on donations. It does not receive any money from, you know, a larger Boys and Girls Club operation or from the state or the town. Or although the town does support the club through the maintenance of the bill... You know, helping with maintenance of the building and things like that. The club is basically self-supporting through its donations. So I just want to put that out there.
Thank you. Bless you. Is there any public comment from the public? Okay. Thanks. We'll move on to reports. I don't have a FinCom report. School council reports?
Oh, I missed mine last week. Cross-country's last meet was last.
No problem. PTO? Obviously, you've been meeting?
We had a daytime meeting for the first time. There were only a couple of extra people there. The next daytime meeting will be in May. But it's just a recap of our September and October meetings. We did have the Halloween fundraiser. I don't have actual figures on that, so I don't want to report on that yet. But it was a success, and it did better than the haunted house.
Excellent.
Both years. So yes. So I can't... I'm looking forward to getting the actual figure, which was good. It was a big hit. Yeah. Yeah.
Good.
So, yeah. And the fundraiser at the primary school that the PTO is running was a huge success. So, well, I'll have more of... I have a little bit of the numbers there. I just don't know what our percentage is, so I want to get that too. I don't want to give out false information. But that was huge. Over 300 families participated in that Square One Art project.
Excellent.
I have to say, that was the easiest online ordering I have ever done.
It was great.
It was, yeah.
Yeah. Everyone was happy. Everyone was happy.
That's great.
Yeah. There are people interested in doing it again in the spring. So it's just something that you may consider.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Okay. Policy has not met, though we probably need to schedule a meeting?
We do need to schedule a meeting. We have...
The next one was.
So I'll send out some options for that. We do have several new policies in the rest of Section 3000 that we need to finish. And then I think we'll be in good shape relative to our goals for policy development this year. And review.
Capital planning?
Yeah. We met yesterday. And technology and fire presented. And so our next meeting is the 18th in school, and police will present at that meeting.
Okay. Great. Wellness advisory?
We met last Wednesday and actually had a really informative presentation about tobacco products and how they are being marketed to adolescents. And I learned all kinds of things that I had no idea. Saw things that I didn't even know you could buy anywhere that they were making. So it was really enlightening. And we had a... Our student representative from the high school was there, and I think he was going to look into talking to some folks. There's some... You can... What's it called? Chapter 84? The 84 Movement.
The 84 Movement?
That is student-led to encourage people not to partake in any of these tobacco or nicotine products, because some of them aren't even tobacco.
Oh, they're just nicotine?
Yeah. The e-cigarettes and all these crazy things. But it was really, really informative, and we got a lot of good information. And our next meeting for the wellness advisory is December 10th at 3:45 in the Turkey Hill Library.
Excellent. Paccel, have they met?
Next Friday. Haven't met since our last meeting. I think it's next Friday.